Welcome to the Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. I ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please take your seats. All right, we did receive minutes. I'm going to give the board to next meeting to review those. They were a little bit lengthy to read, so we'll do those next month. First item on our regular agenda, Highland Mills Group Center Public Hearing for Subdivision Site Plan Special Permit and ARB for Proposed 84 Unit Senior Housing Project Located on the East Side of Route 32 Near the Intersection of Ford Avenue in Highland Mills. Set property is known in the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as Section 218 Block 2 Lots 7, 9, 10, 11, and 13.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. George Lithgow, J&amp;G Law for the applicant. With me is Joseph Fow from Peter Zach and Fow, the project engineer. If we look familiar, we were before you between 2021 and 2024 for the seeker review of the proposed seeker action, which is an 84-unit residential complex consisting of two buildings on approximately 3 acres, 3.71 acres of land right next to Route 32. If you follow the proceedings before the village board, after we received a negative declaration for you, which addressed many of the issues that were of concern to the folks who were concerned about the project, we then went to the village board in, started in April and wound up in June with the rezoning action taken care of. During that process, there were site plan issues that were raised by the public. We wanted to have the public hearing open as soon as possible because those matters have not been raised before you. Obviously, if there's site plan issues, there are things that you will have to consider and address. We respect that. We also respect the concerns of the residents, and we want to make sure we can adjust anything that needs to be adjusted and make sure that we explain what is being accomplished by the site plan we propose. So we're here tonight to do that brief presentation. Actually, if you don't need more information about it yourselves, I think the public is probably aware. The folks who were at the village board meeting received a detailed description of the project itself. You really, I think, would like to hear their site plan, issues, concerns, questions. And then what we would like to do is take those back, make sure we've addressed them all, and work with your consultants to make sure they're satisfied we've addressed them, and then come back to you either in October or November with plans to address those kind of issues if necessary.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant before? Consultants have anything before we go out to the public? No? Okay. All right, so we're going to open the public hearing. I'm going to just start row by row. First row, that's what happens when you sit at the front, you get to go first. So just step up to the podium, state your name, where you're from, and the comments that you have on the project. So anybody in the first row that wishes to speak on the senior housing project?
My name's Bill Bessold. I live in Highland Mills. I'm concerned with regards to how this all got approved. 84 units. I'd like to know how tall these buildings are going to be and how many people are going to live in those units. I just want to also know, does this satisfy the Ecode 360 that the village has in place? Has that been approved from that?
As far as meeting the criteria for senior housing?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Can you also tell me, did local law number nine in 2018 ever get passed? Chapter 270?
I don't have it memorized.
Yeah, I don't have it memorized. Let me look. I'll get back to you.
Okay.
And right now, they are 84 units at two bedrooms apiece, right, George?
Right.
And can I ask, who has purchased this property?
The property is owned by an LLC. It's, I can tell you.
They're going to be rental units.
The units themselves will be rental.
They're rental units?
Yes, they're rental units.
Do you have 84 senior citizens that are willing to rent?
The village, the planning board does not. You would have to speak to the applicant on that.
The applicant has provided documentation to the planning board in prior submissions where they have done market analysis in surrounding neighborhoods that they believe they have enough demand to fill the units. That's not for this board to decide. It's, you know, like any commercial property, hotel, anything that went in, the developer is taking a gamble on their own that there's the demand for the project and the project will be filled.
Is there a capability of getting that information?
I would have no way of knowing if we're going to have 84 units. I mean, I, not a real estate agent.
I'd like that research, you know what I mean? It's like, quite honestly, I'm a senior citizen, okay? And there's no way, living in this area for 40 years, that I see need for an 84-unit senior citizen rental property. Like, you're pretty much putting senior citizens on rental? I mean, that's ridiculous.
We're not doing anything. We're here just because the applicant has proposed a project and the applicant is saying that their research supports the need for senior housing in the area. They have worked.
Can you put that research online?
Go ahead, George.
It is online.
George, use the microphone, please. Just as a point of information, the comprehensive plan does address the need for housing.
Yes, it does.
It was initially addressed with the town before the village existed. It was readdressed in the town's current villages, current comprehensive plan.
Excuse me, you said before the village existed?
You need to talk to the...
When the comprehensive plan was re-adopted by the village, there was, that comprehensive plan identified the need for senior housing within the Village of Woodbury.
Can you tell me what year that was?
What year was it, 2006?
I will, I will get you that one. I do want to tell you that on July 17th of 2024, Local Law 7 of 2024, amending the zoning map of the Village of Woodbury, was filed with the Department of State. So let me tell you exactly.
So Local Law Number 9 in 2018 was passed?
So I would have to look back to see if that was the introductory local law number that it had. It's adopted local law number that changes that, that allows a senior citizen overlay here is Local Law 7 of 2024, which was...
I'm talking Local Law 9.
Right.
2018. You can research it.
Sir, excuse me.
Excuse me, you can look and you can see online from the Department of State to see if that's the same local law that you are reviewing right now. I believe the text has been revised to be clarified, but you can take a look. It's available online.
All right, so you didn't answer my question.
No.
You asked if zoning was passed for this.
When it goes from an introductory law to an approved law, the number changes.
Well, I'm asking, was it approved?
There is a law that is approved, the one I just told you, that allows this project to have the senior housing overlay.
And that's going back to 2017?
That local law was adopted by the village board and filed with the Department of State as Local Law Number 7 of 2024.
That's news to me because I can't see it when I researched it.
If you actually go to the Orange County Department of Planning, the new GIS map for the zoning districts actually has senior housing overlay on it already. They're working on a draft.
Okay, can I ask another question?
Sure.
The air roof?
Okay, that has nothing to do with this project.
Has nothing to do with it?
Nope.
Even though this project is being purchased by an LLC?
It has nothing to do with this project.
And the comprehensive plan was last revised and adopted June 13th of 2019. You're welcome.
You guys are killing me here. All right, so can I ask another question about the air view?
No, because it has nothing to do with this project.
Okay, so I can't ask anything about that tonight?
It has nothing to do with this board or anything to do with this project.
Has nothing to do with the board? Don't you guys have to approve it?
No.
According to Ecode 360, you do.
Sir, I'm not going to get into a back and forth with you. Eroves are protected under the Religious Land Use Act that has been passed by the federal government and signed into law by Bill Clinton. There is also Justice Department memorandum reminding municipalities that those are protected under federal statute. This board has nothing to do with those.
If you have a concern with them, I would suggest you speak with the Board of Trustees or the building inspector.
So you don't approve any lineage going up on poles or anything?
Nothing.
No?
That is all through the village board.
I thought this was the village board.
This is the planning board.
This is the planning board.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Anybody else in the front row?
There was one question that wasn't answered about the height.
Oh, no.
Max, yeah, it's allowed in that zone. Anybody else in the first row? Second row? Anybody in the second row?
Go ahead.
Hello, and thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm Catherine Profeta, and I live at 20 Spring Lake Road, which is right around there, just off the map there. And I was in this room two meetings ago when the zoning was discussed. I wasn't able to attend for the second of those meetings where it was actually passed, but I sent in a letter expressing my concerns. And if anyone remembers, my concerns are primarily with the wetlands here, both as habitat for wildlife, but also as protection against flooding and the danger of serious flooding all around the edges of this wetlands because we're already experiencing greater-than-usual flooding in all directions. So one of the things we were asking for last time, which I believe we got a positive response from you regarding, was the promise that the rest of these lots would remain open space if this development goes through.
It'll be, it'll remain as it is.
All right, so what we would love is if there could be some kind of verification of that, a promise of that, a restrictive covenant or conservation easement that could be made as a condition of approval of this project. And I know there are other concerns about this project, and I share them too in terms of the need for senior housing and whether the impact on traffic. I'm not ignoring those, but I'm just coming with my particular concern about these wetlands and their health. And when they are healthy, they actually protect the rest of us from excess flooding, and there's tons and tons of natural resources there that are the reason that we bought our land right here.
If I could just let you know that the applicant did commit to that, and I've actually started working with them to have it drafted already, to have it put in place.
That's fantastic. I would love to know specifically how it works, what kind of, you know, easement or covenant it is.
Right now, we're proposing a conservation easement, that way some others could enforce it as well.
Great, thank you. And then I guess my other major concern is, I've read a lot of, maybe not all, but a lot of your documents, and I know that there are great promises and a lot of thoughtfulness actually about how to limit flood danger, but I need to know how this will be overseen so that if all the wonderful promises that sound great on paper don't come to pass and we get excess flooding and it doesn't work how it's supposed to, what's our recourse? Right? If somebody watching over this, can somebody stop the construction if suddenly it's going in the wrong direction?
That would all be handled through the building inspector.
Okay. Do you feel like we have adequate manpower and building inspection to watch over?
I'm very confident in our new, our current building inspector that he'd be able to enforce whatever restrictions or permitting that are required. I mean, there's also state permitting that's, it's not just like a simple permit, they go and build a simple permit. There are hundreds and hundreds of pages of stormwater protection plans that have to be followed and implemented.
Right.
That has been reviewed by both our village engineer and their engineer. There's been hydrogeologists on both sides that have weighed in on the matter. There's, you know, that was a very big concern of this board as well. So anything that the engineers have come up with or mitigation methods, they all get worked into the final site plan approval.
Right.
And they're required to be followed. Any deviation from that, the building inspector can potentially stop the project and either have, take enforcement action where it could be corrected on site, or if it's a big change, the applicant could be forced to come back to this board as well.
Well, that all sounds great, and I hope it works exactly like that. And I just always have concerns that things don't always work the way we want to with stuff like this.
I understand that it's hard to trust the process, but there is, there is a process in place. It is not just, once they get a permit, you know, they put shovels in the ground and do whatever they, whatever they want.
Well, I put my trust in you all for the oversight, in other words. And the last, well, two things, sorry, and I'll finish up. One is, I never really understood when the New York DEC and the Army Corps of Engineers come into this process. Like, they have jurisdiction over these wetlands or the stream downstream from these wetlands, right?
Yeah, it gets confusing. It depends on the size of the wetlands, the makeup of the wetlands, where they're located, what they feed into. So there's local wetland laws, there's, the Army Corps of Engineers could potentially weigh in, then you have the New York State DEC. So that's all the fun stuff our engineers get to hash out as far as who's responsible for what part of the wetlands. And then those permits, those permits have to be pulled separately as well.
But those entities will have a moment where they, because I think everything that went into getting the negative declaration came from the consultants hired by the developers. So I don't feel like we've had, if I'm not mistaken, an impartial entity to weigh in on the safety of the plan.
So during the environmental review process, when this board declares itself to be lead agency, a notification goes out to all the interested in and involved parties. So they receive a comment of, they receive a packet of the plans and everything that's going to happen there. And then that, during that comment period, they send in their feedback and their comments on the project, and then they're reviewed by Natalie, who's our village engineer, and then they're incorporated into the plan. So while it doesn't necessarily happen at a meeting like this, there's a lot of back and forth that goes on behind this. There's a lot of emails that go back and forth behind this scene. Orange County will send, Orange County Department of Health, Orange County Department of Planning, the highway, they all send in written comments, and then they get incorporated into the final documentation.
And that is yet to come?
No, it's all in.
But, but as that means that any resolution, any favorable resolution that this board has on any project includes a list of general conditions. Those general conditions include one that says if you require any outside agency permits, and it lists off a number of them, those have to be received. So if they need a specific permit from the DEC, that would happen after this board. If they need one from the Army Corps, that happens after this one.
Is there a way for us to find out whether those permits are required and what the outcome is?
I think in that respect, you'd probably have to contact those agencies, but...
They're tricky to get on the phone.
Tell me about it.
I've already tried.
Tell me about it.
Okay.
But they have been involved in the seeker process on this since day one, since that lead agency notice was sent out.
And then the, just to add on to that, the building inspector can't issue a permit until all of those conditions are met. So when this board, whatever decision it makes, sends all those conditions over to the building department, he gets, in projects like this, a nice little spreadsheet that says they need this type of permit or that type of permit. And then he has to wait for those to come in before the local building permit could even be issued.
Okay. My last thing is just, I have a whole bunch of neighbors who could not be here tonight on Spring Lake Road, and I'm hoping that analogous to the zoning meeting, you will extend a period of public comment with...
We do plan on extending written comments.
Because I think you'll get more written comments.
Yeah.
And I know some of my neighbors have also, as I do, concerns about the need for senior housing and the traffic and all the other issues as well.
No, I totally understand that people can't make the meeting, and it was every intention of this board tonight to allow written comment for probably like a two-week period. So those, they could, you know, people can digest what happened at this meeting tonight, or for those people that weren't able to make it, they'd be able to submit it to the building department, and it becomes part of the official record. The applicant will get copies of those comments as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, George.
Mr. Chairman, we have offered to meet... George, microphone, please. During the village board process, we did raise the possibility that when we came to the planning board, we tried to meet with the neighbors at their location and sort of go over things and try to explain any questions or answer any questions, explain what's going on. And we're still willing to do that if you have no objection.
I mean, we've, other projects have done that before on their own, so I don't take, I don't... Yeah, it's a private party thing, so if you want to put something together...
I just remember the...
No, I understand, but that actually has no...
Fine, I'll speak to this.
So if you want to set something up and put a mailing or something out, that's more on you, on, all on you. Second row, right? Second row, any other, anybody else from the second row? Third row? Go ahead.
How you doing? Scott Somer, Timber Rich. I'm almost a 40-year resident, which I can't believe. Couple of concerns. Many of them probably have been voiced already. I see on the map areas of wetland, and it's definitely prone to flooding. It's a known factor. Doesn't Woodbury have both the shortage of water and sewage capacities? How is this being allowed? The last senior housing we had was across from the high school. They had multiple problems. Look at it now. How do we know this is the undercurrent and the same thing? Traffic on 32 corridor has increased radically over the years. Trying to come off Timber Trail is taking a life into your hands. You've got the trucks and buses coming down from Vasco, it's speeding down, it's coming around the curve. It's an accident waiting to happen. A senior complex is going to have senior drivers. Unfortunately, they're much slower, especially the elderly. Because I'm a senior myself now, I hate to say that too. But we all know, as you get older, your reflexes are slowing down, they drive slower. They're going to be pulling onto 32, they're going to get rear-ended constantly. Seniors who don't drive have to go to town, village hall, and the senior center. They're all on the opposite side of 32. We don't have a light over here. We don't have sidewalks on that side of 32. We have it by Jays, but that's it. The seniors obviously need more medical care. I'm seeing more doctors than I ever did before in my life. That will impact the emergency services. As a member of the ambulance service, I could tell this, I know this for a fact, our ambulance service is seeing increasing calls and covering more calls than ever before. Volunteer, volunteerism across the country is at all-time low, impacting both ambulance and fire services across the nation. We get a call in town, we're basically out of service for two hours, till we assess the patient, get them up to the hospital, drop them off at the hospital, because there's always hospital waiting time, until we get released, until we do our paperwork and leave. That leaves, we really get a second crew anymore? We're hoping to get more members. Anybody who wants to join, we're always open for more members. But that means relying on other towns. And every town's having the same problem Woodbury is. That's all going to impact what goes on here. So please consider that when you make your decision. Thank you.
Two of your questions I can answer for you off the bat. They are subject to the current water moratorium. They would also be an outside water and sewer user, so they would actually have to enter into a contract with the town, a town, sorry, I forgot where I am for a second, the village. So that's, would be the water and sewer right there. So right now, they are subject to the moratorium. As far as the traffic light goes, both the applicant, our traffic consultants, this board has, have all reached out to the DOT and expressed the same concern.
Okay.
The DOT has, and correct me, keep me honest, Phil, has basically said there is not what they call a warrant or need for a traffic light at that intersection yet, and they would be willing to reconsider it after the project is built. We've all had the same concern.
Okay.
And the DOT has basically said, no. And it's a state road. We can't force them to put a light in because it is a state road. I know the village has petitioned the state to lower the speed limit on that section of 32. That's probably stuck in paperwork somewhere.
We're seeing an increasing number of accidents on 32, on Timber Trail, throughout town, really. And it's for various number of reasons, I won't get into that here, but it's just going to get worse, and this is not going to help it.
We don't disagree with you, and we've gone to the state, but unfortunately, we're at the mercy of the state. If the state says no, you know, all we can tell you or the public is a letter-writing campaign if or when this project does go through, that you guys would like to see a light up there. Sometimes a lot more squeaky wheels.
They get a light on 105 and on Smith Cove.
Yeah.
So that'll take forever.
Thank you for your comments. Third row, right? How was that?
You was on the third row.
Third row, next.
Good evening. My name is James Street. I'm also a resident here in Highland Mills. I just had just a couple of, a couple of questions, you know, piggybacking of what someone else already said a little bit, but also just my general concern. First of all, I'll start off with, I guess, the positive. I do believe that housing for our seniors is an important thing to consider. I also think that just the, the culture of the community is also something that we have to kind of consider too. This community, as I understand it, doesn't have many, many multi-dwellings, or if any, the size that's being proposed here. And one of the concerns that I have is, in the first instance, allowing infrastructure of this size will just be opening Pandora's box for future reasons to grant similar and diverse projects of the same size, which kind of destroys the whole purpose of the structure of the village as is. We don't really have multifamily housing that in many places, we don't have these types of infrastructures for a reason. It just changes the vibe and the life of the community members. So that was my first point. My second point is, senior housing is important, but I'm not sure that a company or a firm necessarily has the interest of our community seniors as their priority. And that's the big thing, because if our, if their interests aren't aligned with the needs of our community, that means that our community is not going to be able to partake or benefit from the services that they're offering. And that also means that soon, those services won't be offered to our community. It'll be offered to people outside of our community, and also maybe not even seniors altogether. And so I'm concerned about the protections and regulations that are in place to ensure, one, that our community benefits first from the service and the project that's being built, which is not a normal thing that happens in this particular community. The second thing I'm concerned is regulating to ensure that five or 10 years down the line, that these services are still marketed towards seniors, specifically seniors in our community, because that is the whole purpose of the community agreeing and standing behind such a project. And that's a real concern, and I haven't read or seen anything that addresses the community factors, the members of the community, the community's history in that way. What I see here is a comprehensive business plan, cash cow, if you will, to basically make money in a market that is not oversaturated like in other municipalities. And I don't think that's a reason to go forward with the project. Businesses can make money anywhere. They can do that anywhere else. But to do that and basically change the shape and the culture of a community, I don't think that meets the criteria to kind of go forward with that. I would say even, see if there is a demand. I mean, has there been surveys? Is there a need for this type of community in our community? If there's no need for it, if there's no demand, which was spoken to earlier, it kind of speaks to what the community desires and what the benefit, and how this will benefit our community in the long run. Also, talking back on someone else's comment about the location of the community, we know it's in a very busy area, but the concern for our seniors, a lot of our seniors have issues, some of them deal with dementia, some of them deal with other stuff. They're selling it as apartments. That's not really the kind of situation that kind of lends to our seniors' community. Most of our seniors are on a limited income basis. They're subject to programs like Medicaid and Medicare. They're subject to retirement benefits and pensions that don't really lend to the financial stability that can afford what is called apartment. I haven't seen anything about subsidizing to make sure that our community, our senior community members are able to actually live and afford, or that they can stay there long-term. So it doesn't seem to me, based on what's been made available and what's been presented and even discussed by the developer tonight, that there really is a really solid thought about how our seniors, if this is what this is, will really be able to take advantage, or seniors anywhere will be able to take advantage of this type of residential facility. So I, you know, I have really grave concerns for those reasons, along with just the location because of safety concerns. Like I said, people have dementia, people have assisted living issues, and people wander out. I've seen, I've, you know, professionally have met people who have lost their ability to focus, that they just wander around. And without proper sidewalks and without proper protections to keep these people safe from themselves, we now create a window for a further issue, a further issue of traumatizing our young people, you know? I can imagine someone running and getting hit by a bus or struck by a car while... Like, I can imagine someone running and getting hit by a bus or struck by a car while kids are going to school, or other types of things that could be avoidable if it was just in a better place that could really support the people who are going to be living there. So for these reasons and many more, I really urge this committee to just kind of digest how this in the long run, one, opens the door to future commercial activities that will really destroy the nature and the heart of what this community is about, but also the needs of what's being said, because it doesn't feel, it doesn't seem, it doesn't give the energy of something that's really going to benefit our seniors. And I think that's the critical lens that we should view this through in the first instance, not about making money or profits or using the space or even dealing with resources. Is it really going to do what they're saying it's going to do? And how can we ensure that it will continue to do that in a way that's marketable for the members of our community? Thank you for your time.
Just a few, on a few of your points, as, I, being concerned about it not being used for senior housing. Right now, the overlay district, the senior housing overlay district, there's, if you ever have a hard time sleeping at night, if you read the zoning code, it actually spells out the requirements for who can live in senior housing. It's a 55 and older, there's no children unless they are a caretaker, and that all has to be certified through the building department. So it's not like they can be built today and tomorrow be turned into just straight-out apartments. In order for that to actually happen is the underlying zoning would have to change for the district. So the village board itself, because this board doesn't control the zoning, the village board itself would actually have to change the zoning district that these apart, these buildings are going into for that to take place.
Is it a possibility that, you know, long-term, you know, five, 10 years, that that is probably the foregoing plan? Like, we just need the building up, once it's built, you can't do anything.
Unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball. We, we have to work on the information that is presented to us and the zoning code as it is today. And right now, the zoning code today says these are age-restricted, uh, housing 55 and plus. There's also a bunch of language in there about raising rent, how much the rent can go up year after year, Woodbury residents have to be given priority. So if you do look up in Ecode 360, like one of the other gentlemen here, there is a whole section on the senior housing requirements and what has to go in, into it.
And in those requirements, is there anything about subsidization of housing expenses to meet the need for senior housing?
No, I don't believe there is. It's just about talking about the rent, how much it can be increased, year over year and things along that line, but there's nothing about subsid, subsidization. Sorry, I screwed that word up.
So if they were unable to, for example, fill the majority of their apartments because they're too expensive, for example?
That's on the developer.
Right. But the thing is, at that point, would that be grounds for them to make a zoning request change because they're facing a hardship for that?
What I can tell you this is, any landover, landover has the legal right to come to the village or whoever controls the zoning and request the zoning be changed to whatever they want. They could change it that you could put a 200-foot, you know, they could say, I want to put a skyscraper there tomorrow. That's really the village board that would control that and would have to allow to grant that change. So anything's in the, anything can happen, but right now, it's zoned for senior housing, it has to be used for senior housing, and if the developer can only put two people in there, that's, that's on them.
Understood. You had something else? Another answer to one of my questions?
I did, and I forgot. If, if it pops back into my head again, I'll, before we end.
Sure. It looks like he wants to say.
Go ahead, George.
The first point is, you are correct. It is priority for village of Woodbury residents, and then there's a descending priority, including employees of the village and the town, Monroe, Woodbury School District employees. So the intent is to make that provision, make the housing available for people who live here now. The second point is, there is a extensive, at the end of 31036, there is an extensive description of the enforcement procedure, and that does, in the case of a rental apartment, require annual certification to the building department, sworn document that it is occupied by an eligible population, maybe two people, maybe one people. While it's two-bedroom, the intent of the applicant really was to use the second bedroom for primarily market as work at home, home office kind of thing. So, and the third point is, while it's called senior housing, I think that's generated a lot of, not necessarily confusion, but a misunderstanding by people who look at this from the outside, who aren't familiar with the language or the village code, as to who's going to be here.
Saved by the bell. It'll go off in a second. It does, doesn't it?
I never realized how loud it was. I never realized how loud it was until I got hearing aids, now I know how loud it
That's the end of it.
Does that actually provide directional information, or is it just like a, hey, you'll come to the fire?
It's just to let everybody know that the fire department has a call, and be careful that there's going to be volunteers responding to the firehouse.
So in conclusion, I think I may have forgotten it, but I'm going to work on remembering it while I talk. We talked about the fact that it's in your code, that it's a age, it's a location priority based on residents, and that there is an enforcement procedure which is provided in the code. If I figure out what the third one is, I'll join you. You were talking about definition of senior.
Right. I think people are, I think what you're trying to get at is, you have seen 55 and older, and like, people are confusing senior housing with assisted living.
Yes, when you talk about dementia, that's not this market.
This is 55 and older, on your own, able to care for yourself, there'll be no onsite nurse or any sort of facilities in the building. So in order for you to live there, you have to be able to live on your own without any assistance.
Right. And, oh, the fourth, well, I have a fourth point. This concern was raised early on in the process. What happens if you can't market the whole thing? And the answer that the applicant has agreed to is that the first building is going to be offered for lease. That's the only building that can be constructed unless and until 80% of that building is leased, in which case the second building can be constructed. If it doesn't get above 80% in the first building, this will be a 46-unit project, 48.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, correct.
And so I just, I pulled it up, so if, like I said, if you can't sleep tonight, go ahead and go through this, and you'll see all the provisions that would apply to this particular project.
I def, I definitely will. Sorry. I definitely will check that out. I just, you know, the overall, my, my general concern also is just, just how it benefits this community and also the precedent that it sets for.
Well, that's, that's what I wanted to say. As far as precedent goes, in, in, in land use, it, it's, it's not like people think we're regular, it's, every application stands on its own. So just because this is allowed to happen here, one, you have to understand the zoning, the zoning only allows this to happen here. You would have to then change the zoning somewhere else, and there's very few parcels of land in Woodbury, I think less than six, that actually match the definition for senior housing, where another of one of these zones could go up. So just because if this potentially gets approved, there's a senior housing project here, someone can't come in and just say, well, you gave it to him, now you have to give it to me. Land use is a little bit different like that, where every application has to be completely reviewed from soup to nuts. So if someone wanted to do this again, you would start all the way over from the bottom and go through the whole process again. So it's not just like an automatic pass because one of them goes in.
Precedent is something important, and, and you do hear it a lot, so that's why the board tries to make sure each application before it is reviewed on its own unique grounds, so that there is some differentiation as to why this project, while proposing the same thing, may not get the same result because of some unique aspect of it.
Understood, understood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your feedback. Third row still. Fourth row? Fourth row?
My name's Susan Presty. I'm a Highland Mills resident for 50 years. My question is actually to the developer. How did you come up with, or what reports or studies did you do that you have, you believe that you can create a property that will have people renting there? Like, it's supposed to be priority for Woodbury, so how do you, what studies did you do, or do you have facts? Did you, did you do investigations that you know you're going to get enough people to fill this property?
The question's actually directed to the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies, my apologies. I didn't mean any disrespect.
It's, no, it's, it's okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't know who was supposed to answer that, to be honest, I'm sorry.
One point of information, I am not the developer, I am the attorney.
He's the law, he represents, he's the legal representative.
I represent the property owners who are looking for, who have the approval. But as, in terms of the marketing information, sorry, in terms of the marketing information, it is on file with the village. I'll see if we can provide a link.
You all right, George? So the, this project is a long time in the making, so it may not actually be on the website because it was before we were doing everything digitally, so you may actually have to call the building department and ask them for a copy of it, but all of that information is in a, is in a binder down there. And it's, you can ask to go down during the day and say, I want to see the file for this, and you're more than welcome to. There's nothing that's being hidden here. You're more than welcome to go see it all.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I can't hear you. Yeah, I, I, as long as I've been on the board for the last eight years, it's been a long time, so.
So how long ago did they do that study? Oh, Martha, Martha Lopez, Highland Mills. How long ago did they do that study? And, because the demographic has drastically changed, and I'll tell you right now that I don't have many elderly people living anywhere near me, up a skyline, yes, but all around me, Birchwood, all, up on Pine Hill, there are some elderly people that may be able to use it, but the demographic has changed drastically here. So how old is that report?
Don't quote me, but I believe it was when it was, Trusty Kraus may have commissioned it when he was on the village board.
And how long ago was that?
Do you mean the comprehensive plan report?
No, the.
The year.
The year.
Where, where they.
Are you talking about the survey?
Where he saw, that he'd look to see if it was needed in this area.
I can try and find that out.
We'll, we'll get you a date.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, thank you. I know we have it, I just, I think it's, like I said, before we went completely digital, so it still may be on paper. Fourth row still? Anybody else in the room? Going once? Going twice? You got it before the three times the lady.
We'll make it quick. I'm Tom Schenkel, I'm the property manager up at Timber Ridge. This came up to us about four years ago, and there was not enough sewer capacity for the project to go forward. What has changed to now allow enough sewer capacity for the project to move forward?
They're still subject to the moratorium. So they're, they're going through the process and potential approvals, and they would have to wait for water or sewer to become available to them. They would, like I stated before, they would become an out-of-district user, so they would have to go be, if this project does get approved, it's all contingent on that, that the village board would still have to approve the water and sewer connections for.
So if this all goes good here, it doesn't mean that the project's going to go through.
No, they still have other things on their side they have to do. This is just, the Airbnb and site plan approval, as far as water and sewer goes, that goes, that goes back to the village.
Very good, thank you.
The village board did enter into an agreement with the applicant for an out-of-district user.
I wasn't sure if we were.
But to address Mrs., Mrs. Lopez?
Lopez, yes.
Yes. The comprehensive plan that was updated most recently in 2019, the only thing that I can find right now talks about a town survey that was done in 2002, but there may be something more recent, that's just all that I have on my laptop here, so.
And, and that's what he based?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure.
I think she's asking for something else. I think you're asking.
What he based, yeah, what he did his survey study on.
I think they're asking, did the, did the landowner slash applicant do his own marketing survey to see how he would fill?
I thought that he said he did, so I could be mistaken, but I thought that's what he said he did.
So that was done about 1800.
Yes.
I'm not sure if it was done before COVID, but.
Yes, it was.
And just one other question. So you said that the water is outside water, that it'll connect as outs, like?
Because, yeah, it's, the, the, the water and sewer districts actually have boundaries to them. So this would be a user that is outside of those boundaries that want to connect into.
Who is the, like, where? I don't, just explain it to me, because this is all foreign to me, so.
I would have punked down the hill.
See, use the, let's use what's on the TV there for, as a kind of an example. So see the dotted line that surrounds the project here? Say that's the Woodbury Consolidated Water District.
Okay.
Now, say the project was outside that dotted line, in those little dashes over there, that big set of dashes. So that means he's out of district. He's not in the boundaries that allow a hookup to normal water usage in the district. So what that would entail is a special agreement with the village, would tend, would have to go through the village board and be negotiated, to, at a special rate, to hook into village water usage, because they're an out-of-district customer. When they built the district water district, they built it under lines. That's why Amder Park, if you remember the discussion in Amder Park, has its own water bills, because it's its own water district, it's got its own boundary.
Right.
The consolidated, it's got its own boundary. Sewer, there's a consolidated sewer, and then there's another one over by, down by where Andrew lives, but over that one.
Oh, yeah.
By Valley Forge?
Valley Forge, yes. There's a Valley Forge sewer district, that, just for those people. It's, it's whatever was in, designed in those boundaries when the water and sewer systems were created. So it, there's a, there's a technical line, just like on the board there. So if you're, you're one house outside that line, you don't have the rights to connect to the water system that a regular resident who's inside that line does.
Right.
You have to negotiate a special agreement with the village board at a special rate, whatever they decide, and.
And where do they get that water from? I just, some, it wouldn't be the consolidated.
They can hook into the water, they can water sources.
So it would be the consolidated?
They can hook in, but they don't get the same rates, the same rights. They have to negotiate their own individual agreement, and have to negotiate a price that may be different than what everybody else pays. And it may, they may say no. It's, it's just because, you know, just because they, this goes through, it doesn't mean the village board has to agree to do that.
And so what would determine, like, so since we're in a moratorium, right, for the water, and he still has to wait for the moratorium to be lifted, right, what does that look like? Like, what, at what point do we say, okay, we're fine now? Like, I don't, is that like a?
It's a long answer.
That's a long answer.
It's the wrong board.
It's the village board would have to, would have to lift the moratorium.
Ask me after the meeting, I can give you, I'll try and give you the shorter answer, but it's a longer answer than I think we want to do right now.
Well, the real short answer is the village board controls that right now.
Yes, that's a better.
So it, it would be them that would have to lift the moratorium, or granted exception, either or.
All right.
Out of our purview.
Okay, all right, perfect. All right, thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak to this application? Going once? Going twice?
Can I ask one question?
Sure. Come up, please.
Or any views up for election?
We're all appointed volunteers. We've all volunteered to be here.
Oh, really?
None of us run for a position.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Any, any other questions in the room?
Sorry, until the end of the public comment period, until my end.
I'm, I'm getting to that, I'm getting to that next. All right. Third and final call for public comment. All right, I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing and extend written comment to Friday, October 4th at 3:00 p.m.
I'll second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
What? Oh, I'm sorry, George. I didn't see you. Sorry, George.
Just to clarify for the record, that has to be received by close of business here.
It has to be postmarked or emailed into the building department by 3:00 p.m. on the 4th. Okay. All right. We're going to take a mulligan on this one.
Okay.
We're going to, I'm going to rescind my prior motion. We're going to actually adjourn.
I will second rescinding.
Okay, so question on the rescinding of the motion?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn the public hearing until the November meeting, which is the 20th, correct?
Yes.
All right, so we're going to adjourn the public hearing to November 20th. So that means we'll have another in-person public hearing on the 20th because the applicant has to get additional materials in. I just want to make sure I explain it right to everybody, and that during that time period, you can still submit written comments to the building department. Now, on the November 20th, there is some work that the applicant has to do on the application to get back to us. So there'll be another submission that comes back to us. You'll have time to. On the 20th, there'll be another public comment. I hope that, sorry about that. Does that make sense now, everybody? Okay. All right, so I'll offer a motion to adjourn the public hearing to November 20th.
I'll second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, that's okay. That's why you have the ESQ after your name.
So, Mr. Chairman, are we authorized to work with your consultants to make sure we've addressed everything properly?
That's fine.
We would certainly welcome the participation of members who may have an interest, but.
All right, we'll see you in November. Thank you.
Oh, that's September.
No, November, not September, November. You're the one that just got the hearing aids, not me. George, are you staying for Aon or no? Next item on the agenda, Valley Seafood. Review and discuss secret for site plan, special permit, and ARB for a mixed-use building. Said properties located 30 Valley and Central Valley, known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 230, Block 6, Block 2. I was looking for David in the red balloon. That's why I got.
He wanted to be here.
You just want to give, why don't we just give everybody a second to, if anybody wants to leave? He did.
Oh, wow, this is a big deal.
He did. He did. All right, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I'm Jesse Shi with David Mark Architects. With me, I have Lena, a product architect.
All right.
So since our last appearance, we've gone through the zoning board approval process and received the required lot area variance. Other than that, really, the site plan hasn't changed much since what you've last seen. We responded to most of Natalie's comments, provided additional protection during construction along the railroad side and just adjusted the parking lots so that they all fell within the property and outside of the Valley Avenue right-of-way. And then, yeah, we provided architected for your review and comment.
What's wrong?
The rendering?
Yeah, it should be separate.
There is a separate rendering, yeah. I just have to find it. What's the file name on it? Yeah, can you? I do have a question before we go to the consultants. The site uses propane forklift, and they have propane cylinders currently stored outside, unsecured. I don't see anything on the site plan for if they're going to continue the operation of that forklift with the cylinders where they're going to be secured. Because right now, they're just out in the open.
Okay, yeah, I would have to discuss that with the owner. At the moment, yeah, our plan does not call for any outside storage for that.
Okay. Questions from the board before we go to the consultant? Natalie?
Area. Public hearing is required and remains to be scheduled for this application. We previously requested a narrative for the commercial space be provided, including what is being sold, the hours of operation, number of employees, delivery schedule, size of delivery trucks. We recommend the planning board discuss if that's something that you would like to see from the applicant in order for you to make a decision on the application. Many of our prior comments are resolved, but I'll go through those that I think require discussion with the board. On page two of our memo, we noted that the applicant previously requested several waivers from typical site plan requirements. We've repeated the requests in our memo. The board may consider waivers where special conditions peculiar to a site, certain of the information normally required is inappropriate or unnecessary, or that strict compliance with the requirements could create extraordinary or unnecessary hardship. We've included in our memo our disposition on the requested waivers for you to consider, but in general, we agree that they are appropriate. On page three of our memo, we note that the applicant, or the application would result in an estimated 440 gallon per day increase in water usage due to the addition of two two-bedroom apartments. We defer to counsel as to how the application is impacted under the moratorium. With respect to ARB, the applicant noted on their plans that they intend to match the facade of the dumpster enclosure to the proposed building. Additionally, they intend to utilize a solid wood gate on the enclosure. This is their intent unless the planning board requires otherwise. The applicant has provided renderings of the building and information on comparison properties for you to consider your similarity and dissimilarity criteria under ARB. Previously, the applicant advised that they reached out to the railroad company regarding the proposed work. If a response was received, it should be provided to the board for review. The rest of our comments on the application have pretty much been resolved as far as site plan issues, so that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Questions for Natalie from the board?
Good evening, Philip Greeley. We had a letter, September 12th, a handful of items. Some signing for the loading zone where on the north side of the building. The ADA space just south of the building should be dimensioned. It's not clear the dimension on that. And then, we previously had made some recommendations about signing and striping that need to be coordinated with the village highway superintendent along the frontage because the sidewalk in this area is located on the west side of the roadway. And then, at the intersection of Valley and Laura Lane, there were some previous striping modifications that were supposed to have been completed. If they're not completed in association with another project, those would have to be done in coordination with the highway superintendent. And the very last parking space, the angled parking space, it appears that a vehicle in that space would overlap the property line, so we just want that to be clarified. It's make sure the dimension works, otherwise the vehicle would be parked either on the adjacent property or blocking the roadway. That's it.
Questions for Phil? Just one question. Is there enough parking here? I mean, if you have two two-bedroom apartments and each in a car, that's four cars. Is there enough parking for the store park?
So one of the things they had looked at was, you know, parking in the evening for the residents when the employees are not there. But I believe they're in compliance with the code.
So they require 14 total, and his plans right now have 14 spots worked in. I think the only one is the one on the end that hangs out in the valley, right? So I'll have to confirm that.
Correct.
What about snow removal? Where are you putting snow?
Yeah, I mean, we can show it on the plans if you request it. We make space for that.
You're going to have to because you need all 14 spots, so you can't, what people normally do, right, is push snow into a spot and leave it, so. You're going to have to find out where the snow is going to go and then.
Yeah, I'd have to make space somewhere.
Or you're going to have to, what we've done with other properties, you're going to have to come up with whoever your company is. It's going to have to remove it from the site.
Okay, would you guys need to see, like, some type of?
It would be part of the, if it does go through part of the resolution, that they would have to off-site snow removal. Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions for the applicant?
Phil, how does, since the property line is into the, or the right-of-way is into the property or within the property line, how does parking and maintaining that right-of-way and clear traffic flow work in terms of, like, those angled parking stalls being potentially, you know, within line of sight or backing in the traffic?
Yeah, so in terms of backing out into the roadway, you know, that's same as any other, you know, angled parking space along the roadway. We want the dimensions on that last space because it doesn't appear that it would be maintained within the property limits. So that has to be confirmed.
If that last space, they can't use it.
Then they're, they're not in compliance, and then they would have to get a variance.
So they need to either variance or reduce the intensity of the use so that they wouldn't require all the spots.
Yep. Just to clarify, you're referring to the southernmost?
The southernmost angled space, yes.
This one right down here, right, Phil?
Right there. Yep.
Okay, yeah, that's, it is, those are all nine feet wide, 20 feet long, and yet it falls, it's within the, I think the farthest part of the house, the concrete block still extends a little further out than those parking spaces. So, I mean, it's, I think as shown, it's within the property lines.
Okay, but in that space, it looks like you're allowing for an overhang. And if it's overhang beyond the property line, so the dimension has to be shown from the property line to the edge of travelway. Just confirm it. Just make sure.
Oh, sure.
Any other questions, comments, feedback for this right now?
I'm just referring to Kelly. The moratorium is 220, but is it for one building or because it's two?
For this project, it is subject to the moratorium.
Okay, that's right. I thought so, but I want to make sure.
And at this time, no waiver request has been submitted to the Board of Trustees.
Our next step here really is public hearing. This question is going to be on, can you, so it's either going to be 10/16 or 11/20. It would have to be in two weeks before either one of those dates. So I know there's some comments on Natalie's memo that you have to address, comments from this board. When do you think you would be able to have the next set of?
Yeah, we'd go for the next available.
For October 16th?
Uh, yeah.
All right, just, so you know, if it's not in two weeks before, that you're going to forfeit your hearing, right?
Uh, okay, yep.
Okay. All right, so I will offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for this application on October 16th.
I'll second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you on the 16th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, Aon Hotel, ARB review and discuss documents submitted for amended ARB of previously approved hotel. Said property is located 100 Estrada Road in Central Valley and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 226, Block 1, Lodge 21.22. Sorry, let me just change. If you want to, go ahead and just start. I'll pull up the drawings.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ming Yi. I'm a member of Aon LLC, and we're currently constructing the Aon Hotel. Previously, we came before the board to discuss some of the as-built condition versus the approved restrictive declaration that we had. This is the current planned design for what we want to finalize the building as. From our previous visits, I hope that we are now more in line with the spirit of the original drawing. I think there's still some outstanding site plan, site plan issues that we are having. Civil Tech and Larry Toro, he'll be getting in contact with H2M to address all of those. And we also have hired a new landscape architect to ensure that our landscape build-out matches with the approved rendering and not what we have currently approved because that differs to a pretty large degree.
Okay. So I think the big thing here right now, I mean, actually, is really the outstanding site plan issues.
Yeah, I think that is true. I think that that is the critical piece for this application. But also, just given the ARB materials that were submitted, I think that there still might be a little bit of a disconnect as far as consistency among materials. So for instance, the rendering that was provided and the elevations, there are various differences, like the size of the bulkhead, the signs are different, the window arrangements are different, there's AC units on the elevations versus the renderings. You know, I think that we've kind of talked to the applicant about making sure those are consistent so that ultimately, what's approved, there's no question on, you know, which plan needs to be followed. So I think that that's really important also, you know, and then I think again, you know, the site plans, the ARB, or the landscaping, you know, an ARB form still needs to be submitted for this application, essentially listing the materials and colors of everything. That's critical for the ARB. We had comments on the retaining walls that were originally shown on the approved site plan. They haven't been constructed to date, but, you know, whether or not the stone veneer originally, I think that was called for the treatment of the retaining walls, whether that's going to match the building, that's something from an ARB aspect that the applicant needs to address. So those are just some things, but yeah, you're right. There's a lot of site plan issues that need to be worked out as well.
So do we have a completed rendering of the final product that they're looking to put out there?
This is what we have right now.
This is all it, but it's not.
That's what Natalie's speaking about. There are still some inconsistencies that need to be corrected.
Yeah, it's not clear to me, for instance, Ming, like, you know, which signs are being approved, you know, what windows are being approved from the two documents that were just submitted in July, so, you know, if you just take a close look at that and, you know, advise the board appropriately, then they can consider, you know, what you're proposing essentially.
Okay, I mean, this is what we're proposing. And then with these windows, there's actually, there are actually AC unit cutouts. I think that I'll have the renderer go back and make them more distinct, so it's obvious. But other than that, these are the signs that Comfort is mandating on us. They say that this is current across all their other products and the previous eliminated signs no longer work for them.
Then just make sure the materials are consistent. That's all.
So basically, the marching order is, as far as ARB goes, we want, someone should be able to take this picture out of the file. I mean, minus the trees and stuff. We're not going to hold you to every plate of grass. But look at the physical building itself and say, okay, this is what the planning board approved. This is what you built. Does that, does that make sense? And that's what we ask from all the applicants, is when they do it, when we do renderings with the applicants for ARB, is that the renderings match what's there. So like you said, you know, there's some cutouts with the AC units and stuff like that that have to be corrected and things along that line. I mean, to me, that's minor. It's the site plan stuff you guys really have to, because that's got to go back for another public hearing.
I think George spoke with Kelly today about the site plan and the kind of like the procedure that's going to follow if it actually did need to go to public hearing.
Well, we spoke about it, and what George and I spoke about was that there's an existing code provision, but I did not say anything about whether or not the planning board would be holding a public hearing. And let me just pull up that code provision so I can tell the board what I told Mr. Lithgow. Just give me one second. I'm so close. Just give me one more second. Okay, so. Okay, so what your code requires in Section 310 dash 45E 3B is, it says, "In connection with proposed amendments to a site plan and/or special permit..." A little typo, the, the, hold on. So the planning board is required to hold a public hearing unless, "In connection with the proposed amendments to a site plan and/or special permit, the planning board has waived the requirement for a public hearing upon a determination that such proposed amendment is consistent with the terms of any applicable special permit approval, or if no special permit is required and does not," or if no special permit is required, "and does not represent a substantial change from the approved site plan. The planning board shall decide the application within 62 days of the date of such waiver." So it appears that you are requesting that the planning board make that finding and waive the public hearing, and that's a decision for the planning board. However, since we have yet to see the amended site plan, the planning board cannot make that finding. So we need, again, I'm not sure if you're using Jason or Larry or who you're having put that together, but the sooner they get that in, the sooner the planning board can consider it and can consider making that finding if it's appropriate.
We don't have the documents to make the finding of.
Okay, all right, I'll be sure to submit it for the next one.
I did, uh...
Sorry, go ahead, George.
Just a couple of points of information. I did talk with Ming today about the site plan and what we discussed is Larry Toro's office is doing work to create and has built the building that's actually there. So that, we may not have that far to go as far as an as-built. And then the question becomes amending the approval to approve what the as-built shows or changing the actual building to reflect what the planning board believes should be done. And I do want to emphasize that when I talked to Kelly today, she clearly told me probably three times, this is up to the planning board, not to me. So I'm...
Right, and we, the issue is, George, is we don't have a document that says, this is what was built and this is what was approved. So we can't make that decision because, you know, I know unlike the land, from one of the H2M reports, I know there's a bunch of landscaping things that aren't correct there.
Right.
So what else exists that was approved and wasn't approved? So if you get that document to us, we could very well say, it's six minor things, we don't feel there's a need for a public hearing.
My purpose in coming up is just to explain, Ming has been working with Larry's office to create that as-built. That will be presented to you as our proposed amended plan.
Okay.
At the earliest opportunity. I know that they would like to have done it today, but it does take some time and work and it is, you know, a new engineer. So it, I'm sure Larry will be getting a call at 8:01 tomorrow and he'll be marching.
I mean, you're driving the bus right now as far as when you guys get back in front of us, so...
Yes. We would hope to have everything done in time for, certainly for November, and if possible, try to get it in for October. I don't know how much Larry's got done, what he needs to do, and I know we would have him discuss Natalie's memo with her so that we're sure he's addressing all of those discrepancies that have to be addressed.
Understood. And Phil, I think there were a couple, you had a couple of points too, right? There was some outstanding traffic?
Yes, September 12th memo, George. As part of the original approvals, there were off-site improvements. Sidewalk work, signing, striping, pavement, they all have to be worked out with the highway superintendent. There was a plan that was presented that laid out in general terms what those improvements were, but they have to be approved by the highway superintendent and they have to be completed before any COs.
I can actually jump in on that, just for the off-site improvements. That is something that if the board recalls, Mr. Lithgow and I were going to work on and go through what exactly was required, what was remaining to be constructed. I did work on that with Mr. Lithgow. We did have conversations, I did have conversations with the village street superintendent as well as the mayor and the building inspector. So we're trying to narrow that down because I think there's some things that had been required previously that are no longer considered necessary. So the applicant is aware of these things that need to be done prior to the issuance of a CO. Due to some timing, that wording in those agreements may need to be modified, but I think those modifications have to go before the Board of Trustees if the Board of Trustees no longer wants them. For example, such as the bus shelters. So that is something that's being worked on. The applicant is aware and I will let them know, they, they ask me about it all the time. So we're hoping to move that one quickly so that the applicant can go and do some of those while the weather is still appropriate.
Just to explain, the critical path is your resolution and the developer's agreement requires certain things to be done before the, before a CO can be issued. Some of those things, even if we want to do, well, we do want to do them, we've been trying to get things set up. Some of them require action by the village to obtain easements or rights of way or permissions. So we can't do them. And the concern with other things is, it's getting to the point where they want to open in December, if we have to construct something before a CO can be issued in November, it requires outside construction, weather may prevent that. So what Kelly and I have been talking about is modifying that critical path in a way that still ensures the issues can be addressed. If the village does want it, we can put a timeline and make sure it will get done, but it won't be a barrier to getting a CO. You already, the board, the village board already has a model in place for construction of the sidewalk. I think it may cover some other things as well. We have to do crosswalks on the pavement, those are typically, I think, weather-dependent. So getting to a point where we're concerned when we can do it, if the village wants us to do it, and finding out what it is that the village may have decided is no longer necessary, so we clear up all that stuff. And we may at some point be coming back to you for modification of the conditions of approval to reflect an agreement with the village board, which is Kelly and I were discussing how to make that work today.
Okay.
One other note, in speaking of other boards, ZBA referral was prepared after the last meeting for two wall signs, but it's my understanding that an application has not been filed with the ZBA to date. So that's another thing that needs to be addressed.
Okay, so we'll get to them and then hopefully we're back in October.
Okay. See ya. Yeah, we'll take the sign down. All right. Moving along. PDMD 26 Smith Clover Road.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
We have to have permission to pass to Sparklety, Ford's Consultants, um, check out, I just want to confirm that's still in place.
That's still in place. I said yes. You're welcome. All right, PDMD LLC 26 Smith Clover Road. Review and Discuss Documents Submitted For An Amended Site Plan. An ARB Proposed Four-Bay Garage Said Property Is Located 26 Smith Clover Road in Central Valley and Is Known As The Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 230 Block 6, Lot 8 dot 2.
Pat Brazillo, Central Valley. We're looking to basically do a 60 by 30 four-car garage with a concrete slab and footings, on-grade, metal building, 14-foot roof and 10-foot doors, no water, no sewer, just basically electric, that's it. Usage is gonna be just strictly for cars, vehicles parking inside.
Parcel use or...
No, just four vehicles parked inside, that's it.
It's a prefab building, right?
Yeah, prefab building. It's just the grassy area right now, no trees or anything there. So there's really not much excavating that has to get done. We are, on the site plan, I believe there were spots that were, while we're doing it, we're going to add additional parking spots in just to have, you know, they're not really needed for this. But since we're doing it, well, we have enough room. I think the driveway is almost 40 feet wide and this will just be sitting right off the roadway.
Questions for the applicant?
No.
I think pretty straightforward.
Sure. This is the applicant's first appearance, obviously. The property is improved with a mixed-use commercial building. Our applicant, or our memo notes that additional information on the proposed use of the garage was required in order to determine whether or not this would be an additional principal use on the lot or accessory to the existing uses. So if you wouldn't mind submitting a narrative, I think our memo kind of discusses what, what the contents of the narrative should include, but also when you say, you know, it's parking for vehicles, is it parking for vehicles like as rental spaces or is it parking for vehicles?
No, it's parking for the current tenants that are there now, just additional parking for them.
So like for like the office uses or something like that?
Yeah, the hair salon, the office, just if they need spots, they're there.
Got it. And are the other three-bay garages used for the same purpose?
Same thing that this is gonna, yes.
Okay. If you could include in your narrative, then maybe emphasize the need for the garage spaces to support those uses. And I think that would kind of clarify for the board how they are, how this is an accessory building essentially. So also, kind of going along with that, we were not clear on what bulk regulations would apply to this application, not knowing if it was going to be a principal or accessory building. We'll have more information on that for the board when we get revised materials from the applicant. Because this is a commercial property, the lot area definition in the code requires deductions for certain sensitive site features such as steep slopes or wetlands, which I don't think are present on this property, any easements or public utility rights of way. So that's something that the applicant should consider in a revised site plan. Per your typical requirements, setback lines should be shown on the plan. All impervious areas should be included in the coverage calculations and that includes parking areas regardless of how they're surfaced. So even the gravel parking area would be considered impervious under the code and thus should be included in those calculations. We will review the parking requirements in more detail when additional information is submitted. This development is in the HB zone. The code has special requirements for development in the HB zone, so the applicant should confirm compliance with those things. And in general, there, you know, fire hazardous materials, if there was gonna be any storage of those types of things, you know, I'm assuming not, but if you could review that section of the code and confirm that you would comply, the board will need that.
Put that in the, into the summary as well?
That would be fine, that's a good way to do it. The other ques, you said there was, so you're not extending water and sewer services to the building at all? Okay. Question. The plans do show some existing drainage on the site. It's not clear if that's municipally owned or private?
Yeah, it's, um, it's kind of crazy how that runs. The...
It's not really typical to see it underneath the building.
Yeah, it's even worse behind the building. So it goes through the building and then there's a junction box right here and kind of goes straight across into the block building and runs through the basement of the block building.
Okay.
That's how, that's the, that's where the culvert pipe runs and then ties in with Smith Clover Road.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Interesting design.
Yeah.
Which came first, the building or the culvert pipe?
There should be, hopefully, documentation of some sort of an easement or something, maybe a title search for the property would produce something like that, you know, just to kind of confirm, you know, who owns it, who's supposed to be maintaining it and if there is any restrictions in that area because of the utility. We've also recommended, because of the drainage, where it is located directly across from the site or the proposed building and then, you know, adjacent, I think the grading, you know, we're recommending erosion and sediment control features be shown on the plan, just inlet protection and maybe some silt fencing to protect those catch basins that are open.
Yep.
You know, I think the rest is kind of detailed in our memo. If the applicant has any questions, we can kind of go over them with the board, but otherwise, I know an EAF came in today. I didn't have a chance to review that, but I know that's gonna be important for the board to initiate seeker. And, well, as far as ARB, there is a typical form required by the board, so you should submit that when you're able to. And it'll essentially repeat the information that's on your plans, but you know, what the materials are, what colors are proposed and where. That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions for Natalie? This is just the rendering, right? This isn't the actual color of what the building's gonna be?
Yeah, no, it's a black roof and white building.
Okay. So just list that on the ARB form. Do you have an actual, like maybe a picture of maybe one of the other ones that they've built or...
I do, I could get one in color and submit that one.
If you could, that'd be, that would just so we, when we do the ARB review, we have it.
Yep.
Any other questions?
If you're okay with white?
Well, the white, the building's white over there now, isn't it?
Is there color building?
White and gray.
White and gray, yeah.
It's also not in your rich preservation zone either.
It's not a rich preservation, he's at what, 480 feet or something like that?
That's okay.
The threshold's 600.
Yeah, I'm saying, he's at like four, 490, 490.
I just wanted, we'll take a look at the EAF that came in and we'll take a look at the narrative when it's submitted so that we can confirm what type of action it is under seeker. I just wanted to mention when you are submitting these forms, if you can update the entity disclosure form because Section 2 was blank and it should be filled in if, I'm not sure if it's you or your father's 100% owner, something like that, just whoever owns it, just fill that part in. It was blank, it was signed, but that part needed to be filled in and that was all I had.
Okay.
Any other feedback for the applicant? No? Phil, anything? On the cuff? No? Okay, all right. All right, so we'll see you when we get your next submission.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right. Chugging along. Hartman, ARB 2728 West End. Review and Discuss Documents Submitted For ARB In Rich Preservation For Proposed Single-Family Dwellings On Adjacent Properties. Said property is located at 27 and 29 West End Drive in Highland Mill, is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 235 Block 1, Lots 5 and 8.
Good evening, Larry Hartman, Hartman Design. This is an application for 27 and 28 West End. Those are two residential lots, vacant lots, that my client is proposing, a single-family residential in each of those lots. The last time this was on the planning board's agenda was back in, I believe somewhere April, May, April, April probably. At that point, the consultants had a couple of comments which we addressed, was referring a lot to the easements and the sewers, which we did. There was an issue because originally we proposed a septic tank and we found out there's an easement and sewer on one of those lots, which required us to add sewer line to those existing sewer, to those existing sewer mains. So we removed the septic and added those sewer lines. Additionally, we, one of, some of the comments were, there was a lot of technicalities that were missing, like dimensions and all of that, which we disbanded. I believe the board was on the site, but it was a while ago, and inspected the trees on that site. There was an issue about the catch basin which the site engineer fixed on the property.
Yeah, if the board remembers, we did ask the applicant to go out and stake the corners of the property and the driveway and such. There's a bunch of blue stakes.